This conference will now be recorded.
2023. Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Give everybody a chance to read through them.
Are they in here?
I read.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in a second to accept them. Any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? I'm saying, all right, so done. How much longer you think it will be before he's here? Well, I'm a little concerned because that's, you know, we're talking 6:30 probably at the earliest. I think he just called. That's why I said what I assumed you were doing. All right. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I don't think we should think we should continue this till the next time we meet. How's the rest of the board feel?
Is there any other business?
No, we have some things to discuss, but there's no other case.
Could we do the discussion and then?
I guess we could do that. And if he's not here, then we'll wait and continue it because this could get to be lengthy.
One guy's gonna go out that door and another guy's gonna come in that door.
What?
I don't know, just from the door.
I think he's going out to look.
All right, what other things?
While he's out there, we're trying to decide what to do. I just had a few things I wanted to bring up. First thing I wanted to bring up is the preserve. Leanne, how do we stand on that? And do we have a recent report from the engineer? The preserve.
Yeah, the preserve is moving along. I don't have any new updates. The architect did call me and they'll be coming in. They plan to come in in August with their updated plan with the changes. They did get their DOT approval. Is that what you're referring to, Jane?
Well, I just wanted to know if anyone had been out there to see how it was going.
Oh, yeah, they go out weekly. We're out there weekly. Our engineers are out there weekly and I get all the-
And we had a report though from the engineer, a new report.
Yeah, we get reports every week and and they forward me all their engineering reports and sweats reports are all on file. We get the concrete and the rebars and I have all those in file if you ever want to take a look at them. Chris said they're gonna come back in August for their amended plan because of the DOT changed their driveway.
Okay.
But they did get approval and they want to start working on that road probably in the fall with a couple minor changes. So they'll be coming in. They're gonna try and get their paperwork in by July for that. They did say they're gonna be changing the name as well. It's not gonna be the preserve. So because somebody else already has that name. So don't get too attached to that name.
Well, that's the only one I have right now. So I'm gonna stick with it. The other thing, the Masonic Hall, the lighting that was brought up at the last meeting, which was up to 25th. Did you talk with them because they just not downcast?
Are you talking about the fraternity?
The lights we talked about, there had been complaints because the light was not downcast. It was shining over across the street.
This is across from Kettlehead, is that what you're talking about? No, I haven't gotten a hold of them.
Okay, because I drive by there all the time and check it out and they've done nothing at all.
Okay.
And I think the issue is that it do not, they did not install lights that they can adjust at all. It's just a standard light that they bought probably online or whatever and sits flush against the building. So there's no way to downcast it at all. It's gonna always. So they need to probably change those lights.
Okay.
Okay, but we need to do, see them right away about that because there are still complaints about it.
Okay.
So you'll follow up on that?
I will.
Thank you. How, any changes on U-Haul? Any reports on U-Haul and how that's moving?
Yeah, actually, U-Haul, we went out, I went out with the engineer two weeks ago now. We did a complete site walk. And we're very pleased with the way they had done the drainage and their detention pond looked really good. And they're putting in the cisterns right now. And then we're waiting just for some performance bonds and some escrow money before we issue the building permit. As soon as we get that, they'll be approved to start construction.
And I think it was three, three meetings ago that we had planned that we didn't, that we met. And some members didn't know we had changed the location. The brewery out on Route 3, poor decisions had said they were supposed to come in for a meeting. I think John, you and Tom talked with him and-
Yeah, they don't need to come in anymore. They're all set.
Okay. All right. What was the mix up there?
What the mix up was, they didn't really, they, I was waiting for more of their plans to come in. They hadn't submitted their final plans. So I didn't have them on the agenda. But we've since straightened that out and they're all set.
And I see that the dialysis is moving right along. Have they started the second phase yet? Do you know?
You mean the, they finished the shell and they're now have the permit for the interior.
Okay. All right. And the last thing I have is John and I and Chuck Mitchell from the Conservation Commission went to, and Jeanie Forrester went to the Lakes Region Planning Commission Awards Night last night, which was a really, really nice meeting and dinner. And I just wanted to say those of you who remember Dari, Dari, Leanne replaced Dari. Dari was there and sat at our table. It was good to see him. And he said to say hello to everybody here. He hasn't changed much, except the rest of us had gotten a little older. That happens no matter how much you try to stop it from happening.
This is Mulberry.
It was a very, very good opportunity, I think, for John and me to talk with Chuck Mitchell of the Conservation Commission and realize that we do have the same ultimate goals and we had an opportunity to discuss some of the things that are going on in town and the directions we would like to see things go. And and I guess we sort of recommitted to checking into with the Conservation Commission anytime we can.
Well, Chuck is also on the zoning board now, so.
Yes, that's, that's what he told us. So the other thing that we had an opportunity, because I know one of all of our concerns, and if you'll recall, those of you who are new to the board won't recall this, but I wrote a letter when they first started talking about fixing the guardrails across from the location of the old police department. And we were concerned about what it was gonna do to change the flow of the river because there was some talk about that and changing roads. And I wrote a letter, asked them to keep us abreast of anything going on. And they have not done that. They've gone on and made their plans and I guess called whoever they needed to call. But we discussed that and we had an opportunity to touch base with Joe Kenny, who is on the Executive Committee for the state and, you know, ask him if we needed his help in working on that, if he would be willing to do that. And he said he would. And he's been a a support of us in the past for a lot of different projects we've had. I know we could never have established a senior center if it hadn't been for Joe. He was a prime mover there. So that was a good thing. And I think all in all, it was a very good meeting. Do you want to add anything, Sean, to that?
There was some discussion that Joe had brought up briefly regarding a lot of money that they're going to be putting in for road rebuilding and repairs. So that might be another venue that we can go to for getting that done properly. And Route 3 and 11, as it is a major route to town.
Who's gonna be responsible when that road is shut down for alternative routes? Are they, the state gonna advise us or are we gonna be responsible for?
The state would be responsible for it because it's their road. But they haven't been communicating with us.
Yeah.
They've been leaving us kind of in the dark and-
Sure.
And that's what we had written a letter. The planning board had written a letter. And I believe the Conservation Commission wrote a letter as well.
Was Northfield.
Saying that we had some more concerns about the re-rooting of it. Pardon?
It's gonna show up when there's a bunch of trucks and-
No, that's what we've been very afraid of, that that's gonna happen. And it's gonna change the whole contour of the land and-
You know, it's been I previously had a talk with the former chief of police here. And he said on a, on a, in season, which is Memorial Day to Labor Day, 10,000 people move through this town. And there's no way that he can protect 10,000 people. Yes, if you're coming from the west and you're going east, it's the only way to get here. So it would be, my concern is complete and total bottleneck if they start, if they start bringing in trucks and bringing in excavators. You know, it's just gonna be a nightmare, a nightmare in this town. And I think it should be noted that they should provide an alternative route, saying this is the way to go. We know a lot of people get into the exit. A lot of people go at Exit 20. They don't know Exit 19 exists when they're heading south, you know, they just don't know it exists. And, you know, this should be advised to go that way. But, you know, I tried, I just tried to get, tried to get out of Winter Street onto, onto Main Street this morning at 10 o'clock. And I had to wait a good 10 minutes just if the traffic vehicle by, you know, and this is just gonna get worse, you know?
I live on Winter Street and I never take a left, you know, to go downtown. I always go over the speed bumps because it's, it's easier to come into the Park Street side from behind the horse store.
It's a, it's a lot, you know, I've had to do the same thing.
They really almost need a light there. Like that needs to be like a roundabout intersection or something, but, I mean.
No.
Address the whole timing of the lights and, and, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's one of those things where it lines up where there's traffic going in one direction and then that stops the other direction.
At a time usually. But that's all common knowledge to any resident in town.
Yeah.
Who owns the land on the other side of the brick wall opposite where they're gonna be doing the guard rail work? Have they been approached by anyone at any point to, you know, selling some of that to like widen the road and the sidewalk in that area?
I, I don't know, but we're kind of getting off what we can discuss that after the meeting. We want to talk about that. And that would be something we could talk with the selectmen about since we have one on our board. All right. Any word on? He won't? All right, then, then we're going to continue this meeting. And whoever is in charge, I know there are a lot of different groups that are going in there now. It's not just one group. One person has to come who's responsible, who would be the owner, I would assume. So we will continue it till he can get here. He can call Leanne and Leanne can advise him when he can meet. But I don't want this to happen, show up once again and not be ready to make the presentation. Yes, Leanne?
At a minimum, he needs to sign an authorization letter to authorize the lesors to represent him in the meeting.
Okay, and he can call Leanne and Leanne can make arrangements for a meeting and she will call him back and schedule a meeting and you can come back then, okay?
I have a question. Has this started the 65 day clock?
No, there's been no site plan submitted. This is a change of use with new tenants going into an original site plan. So we're just looking at the old site plan.
So thank you very much.
So is that all of the business for this meeting then?
I think so.
So then what is the, so we have a 2004 approval. So at some point in time, they were trying to change the use of that, that location and then it actually happened?
Well, I think we're gonna have to find out what they're actually doing and the owner.
When they leave, we'll discuss it.
Okay. I can't really discuss it.
One question I had was over where the dard's done all the clearing. I don't know if he's filed any site plans or anything for that yet or mapped the wetlands because it's still going.
And the retention pond is not there any longer. And if you look at that letter that we have from 2004.
But I think you're talking about two different things. He's talking about-
He's talking about the clearing.
The land clearing.
That's over by the golf course, right?
It's all connected with the same. Right?
I'm not sure what, it's where they took the house down and they put, they cleared all those trees right by.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Across from Muffler Place.
They've submitted a site plan and it is scheduled for July 11th for the planning board.
I noticed that they're, they've been putting a lot of fill and pushing it around. And are the wetlands already mapped or anything? Because there's wetlands where those boulders are.
Yep, yep.
He's already mapped them or?
Yeah, we had a site plan.
AOT. No, is that right, the right word?
Yeah, alteration terrain.
Yeah, AOT.
No, there's no AOT permit. No AOT permit.
What's the, what's the minimum disturbance for an AOT?
I mean, I think he's only been working on the first acre. He's only on an acre of land right now and he did the intent to cut. And then he came into zoning for, to remove some of the material. So he did an excavation. And now he's bringing in a site plan. And he did demo the house. He did demo the house. And I guess there was a lot of trash back there because I guess the property was part of American Pickers. And there was a lot of tires and junk there. And I guess he spent a lot of time out there cleaning that up and removing that, moving the sheds. And I believe he hasn't really made a final decision on how he wants to develop that property yet. But he's coming in with, I want to say a temporary site plan or a temporary use that he wants to do until he decides how to develop the whole. I think there's 46 acres, but he's just gonna utilize-
I didn't know there was that much.
Wow.
Yeah, it's 40, it's, it's just under 50 acres. Goes up way in the back. So there's a lot of trees he left. I guess the loggers wanted to cut it all, but he wanted to leave all the trees. And he's just gonna temporarily use that. He's coming in with a site plan to do boat and RV winter storage, just park them, a parking lot unpaved as a temporary use. And he has a site plan. And we bring that in the 11th of July for review.
I noticed that he's putting rocks down by the wetlands there. He's been large boulders and that. So he's actually altering the site.
And that's, you know, should he be stopping until he gets his site plan? Yeah, I can take a look tomorrow.
But should he stop before he gets a site plan? Should he be doing that?
I'll go see what he's doing tomorrow. Tomorrow morning I'll go out and see if he's moving material around by the way.
If he is, he should stop.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
When, when these people come back, if we could have, I mean, are they gonna all make a presentation? Do we know?
Talking about the applicants that just left. Yeah, it's been kind of like herding cats with that site. So it's hard to know who's there, who's not there, what they're doing, who wants to do what. I told them they needed authorization forms. I told them they needed the owner here. I basically brought them here just because that site plan is not being met, the 2004. And I don't even, I don't even know. We've been out there so many times. Chuck's been out a number of times.
Well, it's just a mess out there now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, by the photos, it, it looks like a, you know, a scrapyard and I know-
Well, it's exactly what it looks like.
I know, you know, Drew's auto is directly behind that lot, but I'm pretty sure there's different zoning and approvals for, you know.
This is supposed to be a functioning repair and it was approved by the planning board to sell cars. But limited amount, if you look at the plan that I include in 2004 specific, there's parking spots. It's not 1,000 cars. It's not junk cars. So according to one of the gentlemen that works there, he said there's not one single car on that property that's sellable. So and I don't know who wants to sell cars. I don't know if they're-
Well, they've got a Rent-a-Tech, they've got U-Haul, they've got, they've got everything under the sun there.
Yeah.
So should they stop? Should we have them stop doing those other businesses that aren't approved?
What is approved?
It's all under the umbrella of, you know, one gentleman is doing auto repairs. Well, you know, they're, they haven't sold cars. They don't, the, this got triggered by this change of use that they wanted to sell cars. So I looked it up, said it wasn't allowed to use. They just don't need to do a form. We were gonna just let it flip over because it was an approved use. And then when I looked at the site, looked at the plan, looked at the aerial, I said, no, you're not selling cars there until this goes through planning board because the sites eroded too, too badly to continue with the site plan. So right now, there's no cars being sold. I think they are bringing a lot of cars on the site.
Well, there are a lot of cars there because I went, I went my, I go to Dunkin' Donuts all the time. That's my second home. So I, I'm well aware of the, of the location and it's an absolute mess.
So and I notice, it looks like the detention pond is missing.
It's gone.
Yes. Well, that was the first thing I noticed on the plan.
Be told to stop operating a business there. They're renting U-Hauls as well. And they're just gonna continue-
Yeah, I wasn't even aware of that until today, actually, that-
You know, possibly some type of stop operating your business and because you're non-conforming, you have cars there with no, that are in very dis-
Well, that's why I was hoping some of this could, they could, when I talked to them, they just I was hoping to get some of this then-
Set it out tonight, but- Monitored wells there. And I don't know what, whether they got approval from DES to cap those or not. That's on the 2004.
I know, I saw that.
They could just keep doing this on and on. Somebody needs to-
Stop them. I think they should stop whatever they're doing.
Until they get approvals.
Just, just for the board's information, I went by there and I counted 55 vehicles there.
Yeah, technically, the only person in there right now that got a CO from us to work or operate is one gentleman, the gentleman sitting on the right, the last gentleman that came in. He has a CO to run, is that Rent-a-Tech? So he's doing repairs, which he was allowed to work in that garage. Everybody else, and we've had a couple other people come in. We have a gentleman Mohammed and his son Ali came in. They wanted to go in there and start doing something. Somebody else wanted to move some cars. We've told everybody else not, they're not allowed to do anything there except this one gentleman. Now, Mr. De Felice, who put this in to sell cars there, I haven't approved him to sell cars there. But he's there. He sits in one of the back, I was over there today taking pictures. And this gentleman tells me, oh, Mike is in the back, probably sleeping in the garage. He says, I don't know what he's doing. So he's renting the back garage. I said, is what? He said, I don't know. He doesn't do anything. He just telling you what to do. So that's why I said, well, you guys should all come tonight. I don't know what you guys are doing. Bring the owner and we've got to get this squared away. And you're gonna probably gonna end up having to submit a full site plan is what the conclusion's gonna be. But again, we, the owner is just gonna, I don't know, be missing. I don't know.
Who owns the property?
I guess it's this, you know, it's under an LLC. And so it's, they gave me a phone number of Kevin Hutchins from CK Realty. I have a number now and I can, I'll reach out to him in the morning and see if I can get them to come on the 11th.
Well, I, my opinion is-
He probably is represent- He was probably hired by the owner of the property to lease the land.
Right.
And so.
So I mean, in order to operate a repairs business and like oil changes, they, they need some kind of storage for waste materials.
It was a garage before.
Right, right. But like, but do they, like that, that pond isn't there anymore, you, you noted, like, do they have disposal?
We don't know.
That's something that Chuck would have done as part of the code inspection when he was out there?
I mean, I'm not sure if he did a code inspection per that plan when, when they changed texts. If there was a, if there was a repair business going and a new gentleman went in to that one bay, I mean, I'd have to have Chuck come and speak to that.
Well, the car lot with E cars, that was across the street. And the last time I looked over there, they had left that whole lot a mess too.
Right.
Looked like a junkyard.
I wasn't sure if that was still operating or not, whether this was a relocation or expansion.
This gentleman here is the owner of E cars, this Mr. De Felice. That wants to bring, wants to sell cars in this spot as well.
Okay, not instead, but as well?
As well.
Okay, so.
They have not received approval to do. And then they're telling me a lot of those junk cars belong to the owner, belong to the previous owner. Lot of stories. So.
I'd say that they're non-conforming and they should stop operating any type of business on that property until they come to conformance of, I mean, it's all violation and they altered the terrain, they filled in a wetlands, I mean, a detention pond, which I'm sure that was approved by DES. I mean, they've got multiple violations there. And they could just keep saying, this is already the second time that they weren't able to attend a meeting. So they could keep doing this. I, I don't know how others feel.
Get in touch with DES to see if there was ever any discussion with them about the, the wells, if they could be capped. Because that is mentioned in that 2004 case that they couldn't, unless they capped them. They needed permission from DES to cap them. And also about the retention pond, see if there was anything done on that, the detention pond. So could you check that out with DES, please?
Right. And again, this is back from 2004. So I, you know, I don't know how long it's been going on. I mean, that's 20 years. So.
Well, I'm sure they have the records. DES usually does.
No, I don't say that. I mean, how long that- No, I don't say that. I mean, how long that.
Oh.
It's been non-conforming.
I mean, so from what I've noticed, it seems like the last six to 12 months is when things have really ramped up there. Because it seemed almost vacant in, in December and then.
Mike's automotive was there for a long time. And then Mike moved into Franklin. He's in Franklin now. Mike's automotive is. So that, and then all of this stuff started happening after that.
At any rate, it's not.
I can't believe that it's just been in the past six months that detention pond and the well and all those major issues have been neglected or filled. That didn't happen. These guys that came in here, these texts, didn't get involved in that. I can't believe that that's, I mean, that sounds like something that probably either never got rectified or, or happened years ago. Not saying it's right or wrong. I'm, I just, I don't think this group that's here now, that's now making a, whatever they're doing over there, which I don't agree with, which is why I brought it here. I don't know if they're really responsible for the property's degradation to the degree it is now. But I think they're just all trying to get a piece of, I don't know if it's cheap garage rental or, or they're all working together. I have no idea.
I don't think there was any, I may be wrong, but I don't think there was anything in that rear part. There's been anything in the past few years. It's only after the present owner, whoever it is, came in, that all of that got cleared out. I never saw it cleared, did you before? It was always just.
My concern is not who did what. It's that right now, it's non-conforming according to the plans and of the drawings that, and whoever did it, we don't know. But to protect what we have is wetlands next door. So many needs to stop and they can't just keep doing it. It's got to stop immediately. And, you know, it's terrible if somebody purchased a piece of property without doing proper due diligence to see that, you know, all these are all in file, all these 2004 plans and everything else. But that's not our concern. It's to protect the wetlands and the changes to that property.
Well, the property just changed hands, I believe. I had the sheet. I think it just changed in November of 2022. Is that right, Chance? So it's not that long ago. And I think here is what happened is he bought the property, like you said, Eric. He gave it to some realtor and said, you know, lease this out and trying to make some money on it. And really isn't a hands-on landlord as much as, I don't think he has much to do with what's going on. And I think they've just come in and kind of, you know, destroyed and brought in old cars and that kind of thing. But I think that's what's happening. And they're just trying to make as much money and there's like, one, two, three. There's five days, three in the front, two in the back. They're just renting them all out. And each one of them is just kind of doing what they want, bringing in old cars or.
Like a barber shop, each person's renting a chair.
Right, right. But they're also bringing in a lot of cars and they, and, you know, it just kind of morphed into, well, it's selling cars. I don't really believe they want to sell cars because nothing on that lot is sellable. So that's why.
My concern, you know, regardless of what they're doing, is the conditions of that property and the violations that are there that need to be addressed. And, you know, something needs to be done immediately to stop anything further from happening.
So I'm, I'm assuming even if all those vehicles did belong to the property owner, there is a limit on junk cars on private property?
Of course. Well, why can't we issue a cease and desist for anything being done until you can get in touch with the realtor? And he can either get you in touch with the owner?
Well, I can just send a letter to the owner. We have the address where the tax bill goes. We'll just send a letter saying until it comes into compliance that.
Nothing can happen there. Okay?
I mean, we don't have to deal with the realtor. We can, we have the owner's address, not phone.
They're the ultimate responsible folks.
Right, it's their property.
Okay. We're very happy with that. We do that, okay. Anything else to be brought before the board tonight? Leanne, do you have anything else?
Our next meeting, July 11th. I'm working out the meeting space because the space is already being used on the 11th by the fire district. So we don't really have any place to go. We're going to see if we can either divide the room or we're going to have to go somewhere else. I don't know where that somewhere else would be. So that's going to be a problem. We're trying to work it out so we can get it posted. So I'll let you know.
Talk to Kathy and see.
I talked to Kathy today. She said you had no other place to go.
Maybe we could switch day.
I'll switch day. That would work.
Obviously not the fourth, but, you know, 12th or something.
The 11th.
Or even the Grange.
But we already have a, I mean, we have a posted meeting with an applicant coming, so.
No, I know, but it's, you can check, there's only three people that she asked to get.
Oh, three commissioners.
Yeah.
There's also the senior center.
Grange Hall is also available too.
Well, and I mean, maybe the, I mean, you could meet upstairs on the second floor. Yeah, well, that's where we work.
Well, I, I'm seeing the Grange Hall that's open that the town owns that's.
For what? For the fire district?
The center.
Or any, anybody.
We can, we can meet at.
Well, the planning board needs, it's a public hearing, so we would have to have it recorded and mics and presenter, you know, so we have a little more involved in our meeting space, but.
Well, we have the sound system that Tim monitors and cameras.
At the Grange Hall? Is that what you mean? So there's a full video system and mics at the Grange Hall?
Not a full video system, but.
Camera.
Yeah, we'd have to bring a camera. And that's it.
That might be easier for the fire department to do because.
They have a camera.
We bring a camera to all of our meetings. Camera recording. That's what I'm thinking.
But we have to make sure it's not occupied by somebody else too, so.
Well, yeah.
Or we can divide this room too, is an option.
I can sit right in the middle.
Yeah.
That's really all I have.
All right, anything else? You will let us know when we're meeting, right? And if you, and if you, if we need the senior center, let me know and I can make that arrangement happen.
Can the center have equipment for?
We have a video camera that the town owns that we, for the past 20 years, have been using for meetings. We don't have to have it live.
At the senior center.
Yeah, we can just make a recording. Also, the website states tonight that the meeting's at Town Hall.
The agenda or the web, oh, on the calendar, maybe?
If you go on the calendar, so anybody who goes to the, find out where it is, it says meetings and agendas. If you click on the count that, or it leads you to the calendar.
Well, the agenda I know says the here and it's posted for here, but you're right, the calendar might, because the calendar is a repeat, we're on a calendar every Tuesday. I'll have to look at that. I'll change them for the next.
Going forward.
Well, once we know.
Well, we know everything. It's, we, we know the situation.
Or just put check agenda.
Yeah.
For location.
Okay, all right, thank you. If there's nothing else, then I'll.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you.
Son's back out. You want to just hang on to these? Yeah, then we won't have to make, or you can hang on to mine.
Go back to my car and I pull them out.